Mayor, to follow up to the actions you took, you have two items to 41. Is a second reading of the ordinance pertaining to our zoning regulations and marijuana, medical marijuana distribution facilities. The other would be a second reading, since it is the second reading of the ordinance related to zoning. We also have a first reading of the ordinance related to your business licenses. And that's as a result of the change that council wished to make in terms of the minimum or the maximum number of people where we headed it to anything with the two or more are not allowed to be made four or more. And there were associated changes in that ordinance. So we have a first reading effect on the business license and second reading on the zoning matters. We could come over to more details if you'd like.
Do we have any initial questions? I have a few speaker slips again on this item for staff, my colleagues, while we continue. Start with public speaker slips. Mike Dennison.
I just went to the restroom.
You just went to the restroom. Brianna Billbreay.
I'm a cancer patient, a recent graduate at the University of San Diego. I've got my degree in chemistry. Work with a C P A and trying to get my C P A to take it, hopefully. In January, February 12th, I got diagnosed with melanoma. Came back and very quickly. I come to find out that I was stage three out of four dopamine and noticed I had many surgeries and forced to go to four days. And then I started chemo about three months ago. I'm now on the line. Let's go tomorrow. I've been on and off paying attention to what's going on, but I read in an article, a quote from Mr. Sprig, saying that chemo patients don't have to go that far to like get the medicine that they will need. Reading that comment, sorry, reading that comment, I can tell. Reading that comment, I can tell Mr. Sprig really doesn't understand how terrible chemo makes you feel. The words nausea and fatigue are really pretty words. What would they actually mean? Fatigue? Tired is an understatement from what you feel. Mr. Sprig, you feel like you just want to die. I didn't even want to like breathe, I was so tired. You don't want to get in a car and have to drive across the county to get the medicine that makes you feel better. Nausea, I have about $200 worth of these monaco, when you go to the best of the best. You can call them Zofran, Men, I'm not going to say the C word one, but they aren't worth a lot. They don't do anything. And one dose of medicinal marijuana will make you fine for the entire day. Anyway, you have no idea. It's like the difference between night and day for chemo patients. I guess what I'm ultimately trying to say is you need to realize what you're doing. By banning dispensaries, you are not punishing the kids who find a way to get their hands on medical cards. They can drive across the county to find what they want, if not get approved with the drug card that's here in town. You're punishing us, the ones who need it. Not only are you infringing on my right as a California resident to obtain the medicine that I need, but you're punishing me by making it more difficult to get the one thing you really need, the one of the worst feelings imaginable. I just want you all to keep this in mind if you want to vote again.
Mike Dennison, is he returned? In that case, Marcus Boyd. And you have time donated by Chrissy Rivera.
Mr. Billbreay's talk moved me because I had, unfortunately, four cancer patients come to my office since your vote, and they all made me cry at my desk. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, city staff. My name is Marcus Boyd, 1233 Palm Avenue. I own and operate a successful business here in Imperial Beach, and I'm the vice chair of the San Diego Chapter of Americans for Safe Access, the nation's largest medical cannabis patients rights advocacy group, which holds monthly meetings right here in Imperial Beach at my office. Tonight, I am here to share with you my sincere disappointment with the perversion of the political process which I have witnessed over the last two years on this issue. Rather than upholding the will of the voters and protecting the most vulnerable in your community, those who are injured, sick, and dying, you have chose to ignore their pleas and have trampled all over their rights. Cancer patients on life support systems should not have to submit themselves to the ridicule intimidation that they were the brunt of at the last council meeting. At the last meeting, this council based their decision for overturning state law on biased driven propaganda presented by the county sheriffs rather than actual facts and findings that were presented that night, entered into your staff report, and published in the Imperial Beach patch. Do you not see that you are reinforcing an atmosphere of fear and discrimination within your own constituency? If you take this final vote tonight, you will be attempting to overturn state law and will be in direct violation of it. Undermining the will of California voters has consequences. At the last council meeting on this issue, when patients pled with you not to break the law, you ridiculed them and attempted to alienate them from the political process. You had a large contingency of county sheriffs lined up outside intimidating every patient that walked through the door, and to top it off, the deputies took out their cameras and began snapping pictures of the patients. Is this how you treat your constituents? That? Take their time out of their day, of their busy schedules, and come out here and to participate in the democratic process. In the beginning of this process, the council recognized that politics, not facts, were to be eyeed through this land use issue. And at that time, council members and you, Mr. Mayor, promised to handle this as a strictly land use issue. In fact, I specifically recall you instructed the staff to keep politics out of the process. You have not kept your promise. You have allowed the bias, reefer madness propaganda to drive your decisions rather than facts and findings. Mayor Janney, the very politics that were to be excluded from this process have taken complete control of it. Even after you have read the proposed ban yourself, you were understandably shocked and appalled when you discovered the ban was so overreaching and intrusive. Councilmember Bragg, I really do appreciate you letting me know at the last meeting, we're in the process, we lost our friendship. By the way, did you hear the sheriff's expert tell you that holistic healers and not doctors are issuing medical marijuana recommendations? Now tell me, how can I apologize for interrupting conversations at the exact time that you were being misled by someone you're placing blind trust in? There are no holistic healers issuing recommendations. In fact, only medical doctors and osteopathic physicians are allowed to recommend cannabis. I've given you in your pack an example of a recommendation issued by the local urgent care doctor in Imperial Beach, and I let him know that you called him a quack. And councilmember King, I gotta bring to your attention the fact that you made firm statements supporting safe access for patients during this process to the extent of actually putting a motion on the floor to move forward with the ordinance for safe access. What happened? You seem to have completely changed your position after the closed-door session meetings council had on this issue. By the way, can anybody tell me why the public wasn't notified of those meetings? Don't worry, I know you're not going to answer me, and you don't have to. I'll be sure to remind and explain to the voters for you. Councilmember Sprig, I'm surprised you of all people allowed anyone to pollute your thoughts on this issue with misinformation. With your background, you should have responded to the insinuations and generalizations of qualified patients. You are a chancellor at UCSD Medical Center, the very same medical center that, right after medical marijuana laws were enacted in California, was contracted by the state of California to study only harm-related issues with the use of marijuana as a pharmaceutical. And as you know, and can testify with authority to the other council members, no harm was found. In fact, isn't it true that major benefits were found? I believe Dr. Grant's report specifically on M S spasticity states that no medicine, medication available on the current market for muscle spasticity helps, like smoked cannabis. Council, the community at large elected all of you to represent them. This is not the case on this issue. If you vote to approve the ban tonight, you will be doing so against the will of the voters, of your own constituents, who you purport to represent. Although you may think you are putting this issue to rest tonight, I can assure you, by taking these steps, you are guaranteeing that this issue will stay in front and center leading right up to 2012. Dear council members, it is not too late to change course. I urge you to table this vote tonight, give the facts and findings about this land use issue a fair and balanced review. The sick and dying patients deserve at least that from you. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Dennison, are you in chambers? I have a speaker slip to gentleman who's not here. But I include public speaker slips. Do I have any questions, comments from my colleagues before we move forward with the reports on our agenda package? Mr. Sprig?
Just for the record, I'm associate vice chancellor in student affairs. I'm not associated with the medical school and don't have any medical background. I did have a question. The reason we're considering the first reading of the zoning ordinance is because of the change in definition of...
Right, it's not the zoning ordinance, that one you can do the second reading. The business one, when the council voted last time, we made a change in section 4.60.010 A1, but it also necessitated a change in A2. So that cultivation, cultivation is not included in the first part of the definition. And so the cultivation was still essentially two or more. And so we wanted to make it consistent with council's intent of four or more.
Right, that's the point, four or more. So I actually have a question for, I guess, our city manager and anyone in law enforcement division. And that's, we didn't really have an opportunity to thoroughly examine what the four or more would mean in terms of probable actual practice. And essentially, if the exemption of three or less from these, the ordinance. And so I guess my question is, if we have an exemption of three or fewer people from the ordinance, what are the worst-case kinds of scenarios that that can create for, in terms of our intention, at least the intention of the last vote, to effectively not have medical marijuana dispensaries on the city limits? In other words, can you operate something akin to a dispensary if you've got, is three or less a critical mass for the kind of activity that we're really trying to avoid?
I don't think of any, I don't think of approach the dispensary patterns that we've seen throughout the region. You could have small, like three or fewer people operating like a cooperative or a collective, probably doing it in a backyard. I'm not sure if it would be legal, but in fact, I don't think there could be much of a chance for my business dispensary to be open. I guess you would, you, well, then we could get a combination of zoning. It's likely, it's likely that somebody may try to have something in their neighborhood or one person growing in their neighborhood, another, two others.
We're kind of guessing here, because I'm having to have some legal standpoint. I'm not sure if Mr. Sprig is looking, does it cause a difference when we, the original draft had two, we asked to go to four, and that number, does it cause a problem from a legal status enforcement or something in those standards? What are we looking at?
I guess when you go from, from two or more to four or more, you are really creating an opportunity for people to do, for up to three people to be growers, distributors, whatever. And, and I don't want to put ideas into people's heads, but you can have various tribes associated with that. And that's, so that's the concern that I have. When you have, when the regulation had stated it was two or more, that essentially means, yeah, pretty, I think, in the most severe manner, and it meant it's less likely for anything that are unincorporated side effects and consequences. That's all I'm saying. I think that's something that we can go with, the three or less detention or four or more definitions, that we don't look at, but it's something that we'll have to, you know, pay close attention to. And see how it works. And, you know, I think contrary to some of the concerns that are expressed, we said very clearly, I said very clearly at the last council meeting, we discussed it, that the issue is not really legitimate users, whether it was a medical doctor that prescribed it or whatever, it is the abundant testimony that we have regarding abuse by people who are not legitimate medical marijuana, do not have legitimate medical marijuana need. I don't think, I think I said specifically that if the situation were evolved to the point where we only had legitimate users or legitimate medical marijuana card carriers in and out of these facilities, that we'd have a completely different view of the situation. It's the secondary business, it's the fact that just, we have testimony that just about anybody can get a card, that it's very liberal. The medical marijuana movement and industry has not evolved to the point where, where it's really primarily, if not exclusively, the medical justification, medically justified people who are having access to it. We have no, I have no, I speak for myself, ask to grant to anyone who really needs it. But we have this huge abuse situation that has been demonstrated in many communities. And, you know, why would we want to expect, why would we expect that Imperial Beach would be immune from that kind of situation if we attempted it here? There's no reason to think that we would be immune for some strange reason from the abuses that have taken place elsewhere. So, you know, I just have to be clear what the reasoning is for all this. And there's lots of other reasons as well of it being seriously, including the five or six hundred foot radius from, from schools and other areas that applies in other communities and in the county, that we really have almost no, if not no areas where we could have compliance with that in Imperial Beach. So I really, you know, I think that that kind of restriction is something that if it were brought forward a year or two from now, and they were looking at it, and we had, and the community had evolved to the point where it was only the medically, the medical need people who were having access, I'd be prepared to say, okay, well, 500, 400, we don't have to worry about that as much. It's really people in need and only people in need really have access to these facilities. That's really all that I can say about it.
Do we have any other comments? So we have a couple of actions. Billbreay?
I'm just gonna say a couple words. I'm just gonna reiterate my opposition to this again. I don't think it's a responsible thing to do, but something that we all need to think about is that it's not our job to sit up here and say who does not need medical marijuana. That's between them and their doctors. Our job is just to say if people in the city actually need this and what's the responsible thing for the city to do to avoid extra costs to the city through either litigation or putting it on the ballot. It's going to cost the city more. The responsible thing to do is to either zone for one, or if we're not going to do a dispensary, you withdraw this as known and allow collectives and cooperatives in the city. So that's all I really have to say on that. But again, I will not be going for this.
Mr. Dennison, I see that you showed up. I mean, normally I never call your name twice, and you weren't present. Would you like to still speak to this item? Yes, please, thank you. Thank you so much. You had a bonus, you had a bonus. I wore my black shirt tonight because I wanted to use this as my symbol to show that I'm against this ban. This ban is irresponsible. I see it as a breach of public confidence. I expect the people to make decisions for me in my name or for my benefit to weigh things, not emotionally, not, oh, this is what I heard, this is what I heard. Actually, you need to weigh things, do some research, read some of the research that you get. Don't just take it verbatim from people that have access to it. Listen to what goes on. Okay, check this out, I did this, I did that. I did due diligence. I know what I'm talking about. Not this sad thing that I hear. Oh, well, we didn't even know what the thing said. I was here last week. We were all shocked about it. I heard you talking about it too, so enough about that. That kind of represents to me that you guys didn't have all yours in order in this thing. You're trying to wrap something through. That's my opinion, and while I'm talking right now, so I can give that. And the other thing was, when I asked you about the funds for the next part of the thing, where you guys had all this 7.5 million or something, funds for litigation, and I asked you to prepare the funds for the litigation that was going to inevitably come from this because we're setting up our rights. And you said, yeah, that was perfectly fine, that's what that was for, pretty much, for verbatim, but that's what I got. Now, the meeting before that, I saw a thing about Dog Park, they were trying to get Dog Park. You guys couldn't fund that. You couldn't fund the resources for Dog Park, you could do a study for Dog Park. You had this reason, that reason, and the other reason, but it all came down to money. So now you're trying to ban dispensaries for emotional reasons that have been presented to you. Oh, we're afraid little Johnny's going to do this, that, and the other thing. Say, parents who really don't want to raise, be responsible for little Johnny's raising, so they drop that into the city's lap. Oh, I want you to watch out for little Johnny. Pardon my French. Don't pay attention to everybody else's rights, it's what I'm afraid for, little Johnny. So for instance, that's pure race, that's party, no talking. I don't want that to be people who represent me. I want them to be more responsible, to weigh things responsibly, and to think about, oh, this is the United States, we like to keep things free, we want to be responsible people's rights and responsibilities, we're not going to take over those just because somebody has an emotional basis. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. And I urge you to pause, put the ban on the back burner so you can do further research. Thank you.
I see no other speaker slips or comments we have before us.
It's very clear fact to people who would like to see dispensaries operated, I understand. See, in our position, this might be easy, because we have a number of people that look to this community. I want to ask a pretty, a permeable question regarding the way that the law was written, eliminating prosecution of people possessed medical use, medical marijuana, putting it in prison. The second part of the question was regarding dispensaries being collectives or cooperatives. As I understand it, perhaps in law, is that a mandated part of the law, or is it the mandate that people who possess medical purposes do not get punished?
Right, the current state of law talks about an affirmative defense for those who get together to cooperatively and collectively cultivate and use, possess, distribute marijuana. There's nothing currently in the law that's a mandate to every city to locate a cooperative or collective in your city. That's, there's just nothing currently in the law that's a mandate to cities. And the cases and the law that's out there suggest that cities have the ability to regulate location and establishment of dispensaries, cooperatives, collectives. And they have zoning power, they have, you know, that's one of the fundamental rights of a city council.
Thank you very much. It seems to me in that regard that what this issue really involves, and it involves many people in the state of California, gathering together to give rights to people who have medical needs. And it seems that the issue really boils down to availability for medical use and where that availability is to occur. We in this council looked at it in terms of the size of our city. I personally think that in one regard, it would be nice to accommodate, but on the other regard, there are things that have not been worked out, and there are problems that are consistent with a number of dispensaries. And I need to dispel something. I've read most all the material, including what Mr. Boyd has given me, and one of the things that I find to be erroneous in the argument to most of the people who are in favor of it, and I think they don't do themselves a favor, is the continuous reflection on the fact that, what do you call, oh, marijuana madness. Recounting that, everybody's been fed this marijuana madness thing, and that's an old movie that was done in the 50s. I think that's truly an incorrect statement. I think there's valid concerns, and I think that's what I represent. I don't want to see anybody denied access. I appreciate Ms. Billbreay's mentioning that. To go out of town is a very difficult disposition, and I can appreciate that. That's why you're a caregiver, you know. On that, I think I'm going to close at this point. But as I said, this is not, this is not an easy issue on a community-based level. And that's all.
Thank you. Any further comments on it? What, Miss Bragg?
It's unfair to say that we haven't done our due diligence as council members. We all have. I, a couple weeks ago, in fact, I called somebody sitting in this audience to get their feel. How would you feel about a dispensary in your community? We've all done outreach across the board to many members of this community. And as I've always said, when we vote on something, it's because we talk to a lot of people. And our vote reflects what the majority of the people we talk to want us to do. Sometimes I vote on something, maybe it's not the way I personally feel, but based on what the majority of the people have told me, have expressed to me, that's how I place my vote. And we all look at the merits of each issue before we do vote. King?
Moving on, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the report in the June 15, 2011 staff report as the report required for Senate Government Code, section 25858. Is that the way we...
The code section is actually 65858, the best section.
65858. 65858. So we need that motion first before we go through with the resolutions? Okay, that would be my entertainment. I'll make that motion, and then... Well, I'll make that motion then, that we adopt the report in the June 15, 2011 staff report as the report required pursuant to government code section 65858. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Motion carried by the following: both, eyes, Janney, Spriggs, Bragg, King, Nose, Dolbray.
Are we adopting Resolution 2011-7061? Is that what we're adopting here?
If the council is inclined to adopt, to do the second reading of the zoning ordinance, then this resolution would be necessary to submit the zoning ordinance to coastal commission.
So then I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2011-7061? No motion? And a second? Can we please vote?
Motion carried by the following: both, eyes, Janney, Spriggs, Bragg, King, Nose, Dolbray.
Call for the reading of ordinance, read the title of ordinance, 2011-1119.
Ordinance number 2011-1119, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Imperial Beach, California, adding chapter 19.61, Medical Marijuana Distribution Facilities, to title 19, zoning of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code, and appealing ordinance 2010-1107.
I'd entertain a motion to waive further reading and adopt ordinance 2011-1119. We have a motion and a second. Can we please vote?
Motion carried by the following: both, eyes, Janney, Spriggs, Bragg, King, Nose, Dolbray.
Call for the reading of that ordinance, 2011-1118, amended.
Ordinance number 2011-1118 amended, an ordinance of the City Council for the City of Imperial Beach, California, amending title 4, Business Licensing and Regulation of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code by adding chapter 4.60, Medical Marijuana Distribution Facilities.
Entertainer, motion to dispense the first reading of ordinance, 2011-1118 amended, and set the matter for adoption in a next regular scheduled city council meeting on the 20th of July, 2011. I have a motion and a second. Can we please vote?
Motion carried by the following: both, eyes, Janney, Spriggs, Bragg, King, Nose, Dolbray.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. Item positive report, 6.1, our monthly update of the redevelopment of Seacoast Denseral.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I need to reduce myself based on a conflict that been just due to a prior placement.